Are we also live on the, whatever, Civic New Turn? Facebook? Yes, Facebook. Again, one of these ones. Are they part of Metta now?
Yeah.
Mettavers.
Mettavers. So, welcome to Metta. Okay, let's call our meeting boarder. Yeah, I'll get into, well, you know, there's no reason to log into.
You don't have to.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is always.
I'm just gonna share.
But I call me at 7:06. And the host will let me in soon. And we'll look at all the planning commissioners here as well as borough managers, Samantha Bryant and MCTC, consultant Chloe Moore, who are with us tonight, and then members of the public in the room. That's tonight. So, did everyone have a chance to review our extensive draft, the same as the agenda for tonight? We're where we are.
You do that.
Okay, so tonight, we have no land development applications or subdivision applications to review, so we are going to devote our time to a discussion of the SALDO ordinance. And we appreciate Samantha that you can walk us through the key changes. Key changes that are being proposed. And this is your chance, this is largely a process section of the SALDO, so it's everyone's chance to offer feedback and comments tonight. Then we will continue our discussion on the Philhouser accessory zoning unit zoning amendments at the Borough Council workshop Wednesday, in which this topic will be on the agenda. We'll walk through the schedule to that as well. So with that, I'll start. I don't really have a chair or something to offer. Chloe, do you have an update? Can I make that a quick question?
I would say, well, thanks for your in flexibility as we sort of approach your every meeting, but the right one, based on what's on your agenda. And I just said I've been coordinating a lot with Aaron in my, and I've also started working on the SALDO with Eric. So I'm trying to do that. And I can provide, why don't I wait until the SALDO agenda item and then see if there's anything that I could add that's pretty helpful.
Great.
Thank you all.
Nice to see you. Okay, so before we start the SALDO review, the last item is approval of the minutes from last month, which I distributed today. Has anyone had a chance to review them or have questions or comments you'd like to offer? Okay, pardon me?
Everything.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Please, move.
Cornwell and Jennifer. Okay, and any discussion of the minutes? Okay, so all in favor of approving the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I will submit these to the Bureau Office and then they will be posted as soon as, as soon as possible. Okay, so let's move on then to first item, the next item of business, which is a discussion of the subdivision and land development ordinance. So I'll turn it over to Borough Manager Bryant.
Sure.
And to Chloe. Do you like being called that?
Sure, thank you for listening.
Thank you for joining us. We're really glad to see you in person. I know we were planning to do this online, but we're glad you're here.
Yeah, no, it's good to see everyone in person as well. So just for my reference, help ensure that I have a productive conversation pool tonight. And has the planning commission seen yet any draft ordinance out?
Well, I'll start. We did receive a copy of draft version dated October 19th, 2021, and they were distributed to the members of the planning commission for review. There's also an earlier draft that was submitted.
That's just the plan submission, processing and review section.
That's correct. Yeah, that's what, that's what I believe, I believe that we've got.
All right, great. Yeah, I'm really grateful to work them up there. County Planning Commission has put into this, as well as the borough staff, Kevin and Eric and other folks, and especially Michelle. To be quite blunt, you know, I've attended one of the meetings where we talked about the SALDO, and I've had some individual conversations with the folks involved in it. So honestly, Eric and Kevin and Chloe might know a little bit more about it than me, but I didn't want to answer any questions you all had here tonight. And especially from the staff side, the main thing I wanted to point out in doing this is helping to bring, for the land development timeline, helping to bring some more cohesion of that, helping to develop a process that would work well for the planning commission, applicants, as well as for the borough staff. And, you know, that's one of the biggest things I'm going to talk through with you all tonight. So I'm not sure if the current draft has those conversations we've had, because those have been more of the recent sort of things we discussed. Chloe, does the SALDO process changes in this version of it?
Yep, I think everything we discussed is in there, although right around October 19th or 20th, we, Aaron and I met with Michelle, and she was going to follow up on a few of the questions or issues that were in here with your solicitor. She had a couple of questions she was going to follow up with him, and also a couple of questions for you. So it hasn't been updated since that conversation, but it was significantly updated since, from the first draft after various feedback was received from a variety of parties.
All right, well, if I can just speak to, I said, for maybe Chloe, you know, you're welcome. We have some other parts of it, and Eric and Kevin, as well, is appropriate. So the biggest thing that jumped out to me about the SALDO process in Narbor, especially when looking at the state municipal planning code, is how tentative sketch plans are handled in Narbor Borough. And that our current SALDO requires every applicant to submit a tentative sketch plan. And the requirements for the, so in the MPC, tentative sketch plans are not required. And in addition, the level of detail that Narbor Borough is looking for in the tentative sketch plan does go a little bit beyond what I've seen in other places. However, speaking, having had a chance to talk with Mr. Bressi and speaking with some staff about it, it does sound like the tentative sketch application is a good opportunity to weed out any concerns that will prevent the project from moving forward, and is a good thing in that sense, in that you're not necessarily getting into everything with the preliminary plan if it's something that's not really going to work out for the Borough. However, I think on the staff side, one of the things that are missing in that process that could be a huge help for the planning commission, for the staff and for the applicant, is in my past employment, what would happen is a land development application would come there, whether it was a tentative sketch or just an outright preliminary application, and the borough engineer and borough zoning officer would issue their review letters. And instead of it immediately going to the planning commission, the staff would actually would meet with the applicant and would sort out, like, what are will complies? You know, so that way you're not spending time going through review letters if it's things that the applicant has already agreed that they need to change or are willing to change that are violations of SALDO or zoning, not things, not things that are policy or content or deliberative. That's more the realm. That's why we have a planning commission, that's why we have you all. But more things, there's obvious quantitative violations of the zoning code, like, you know, this dumpster needs to move a foot back, or, you know, you need to remove a parking space, or something like that. And then for those things that are not, will complies to the applicant. The staff would then guide them, well, these are waivers you're going to need to request from the planning commission and council, or these are the things you're going to need to go apply to zoning hearing board for. The other sort of procedure was, if someone had to go to the zoning hearing board, they would automatically submit a extension of the land development timer. The general rule that I operated in and my past employment was, if something requires zoning hearing board approval, I don't want to bog down the planning commission's time with reviewing something that an external party was also going to have to rule on. So those are some of the things that jumped out to me. So I believe in the SALDO draft that you've been provided, it calls for some changes to the tentative sketch plan process and that introductory application period. And I think that by changing some of those requirements and having the staff involved early, again, not on, how do I put it, not on qualitative matters, but on what I would call quantitative matters, things that are simple zoning or SALDO issues, it could save the planning commission some time and save the applicant some time. Because then the plan that you would get from the applicant would be one that would hopefully have a much, you know, would have those sort of things already resolved and taken care of, instead of you all having to spend time discussing those things with the applicant. So I hope that's a good summation of the conversation that we had, or a good understanding of that. The conversation I had with Mr. Bressi with Borough staff and with Urban Plan MCTC. I'm happy to talk through any questions or concerns that Samantha present or the planning commission has with that whole process and approach.
Okay. I just want to note. Sorry, is that her? That Kevin Walsh and Eric Johnson have joined us, so welcome. We appreciate your being here. So make sure everyone knew they were with us tonight. I don't have any comments myself, because I've talked to Borough Manager about this before, so I'd rather leave it open to the planning commissioners on questions or comments they'd like to make.
I think it makes a lot of sense. I did have a couple of questions. One is really basic. It has to do with the number of paper copies that come through, and I know you noted that too, Chloe. And I'm just wondering, I mean, this is kind of minor, but it seems like there's always big piles of submissions. And I just, for the sake of sustainability and not making so much paper, since we can read digital copies, I'm just wondering if there's something that other boroughs or jurisdictions are doing to kind of curb the amount of paper that has to be generated. That was one. And then the other question I have, and I'm sure this is covered elsewhere in the SALDO, but what qualifies as a mine in the plan?
That's covered in the definitions.
Okay, in another place, I guess.
Yes, I don't have that in front of me, although that was drawn over already. I mean, I do actually have it in front of me, because it's in my old computer. And I can look at it and tell you. But I'll say something about your other question, which is that lots of communities are looking at how many paper copies they're requiring some. I have seen someone put in one paper copy, one digital copy, and then try to put in a caveat, like, if the borough requests additional paper copies, the applicant shall provide them within 14 days, or something like that, so that sort of wouldn't be out to say, like, oh, someone needs more. But mostly what I see people doing is going around, hey, planning commission, how many of you guys want paper copies? And, like, you know, two people raised their hand. Okay, hey, shade tree commission, how many of you want paper copies? Hey, engineer, code enforcement officer, do you want paper? You know, and they just count and say, okay, we'll put that number in the ordinance for now. It's an imperfect situation, but that's what I've seen in Narbor. And that was actually, I think, Michelle, that was one of the things she was going to follow up on, was to sort of try to ask around and see how many.
People wanted.
How many, how many paper copies are really desired?
Because, I mean, if you have a laptop, you can look at it on there.
Yeah.
Even during a meeting.
Yeah, but you can't read the fine print. So.
It's personal, you know? It's like personally, I just assume zoom in, but if you prefer paper, that's, I'm just speaking for myself.
I was about to say, I think it's a generational thing, but I guess not. I just find it incredibly cumbersome to try to zoom in and zoom out rather than just looking at a printed sheet.
People feel differently about it. But yes, whatever, whatever Michelle tells us is the final number is what we'll put in here. Okay, that's where we left it anyway.
Yeah, I think it's probably better to leave that to procedure rather than code, but to allow for flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Minor subdivision, a good question. I went back to the other SALDO, because I've always wondered what that is too. And in the definitions.
Is it for the lots?
Well, no.
That looks like a lot.
The definitions actually refer you back to the code. So I guess number one is you're taking text out of the code and putting it in a definition. But the text in the code says, "The Borough makes up the simplified subdivision plan herein to be considered a minor subdivision in such instances in which a lot line is to be relocated or land is to be added to an existing block to adjacent tract of land with no additional lots being created, no new construction proposed except single-family development as herein described. All lots affected by the lot line change are made acceptable learning regulations, common deeds may be executed." Blah blah. So basically, what I believe it means is that you're just adjusting the lot lines in a minor way between two properties to allow for the construction of a house, which I think we saw on Dudley recently, right? That, that sort of thing is what, is how it was defined in the, how it is defined in the current SALDO.
Current code.
Is that going to be changed?
It looks like there, I did not work on the section, but it does look like there is a proposed adjustment to that definition, not anything that would substantially impact the meaning. But a lot line adjustment for any reason that is, a lot line adjustment for any reason, or a simple conveyance, one lot, or a portion of one lot that's being tagged up, and you can name the owner of a new dwelling lot. So it doesn't create a new lot, it just takes a land area and can use it to manage a decent landowner, which is kind of similar to a lot line adjustment, although it may be a different shape. I can read it. Why don't I just read it somehow? Instead of summarizing it. Minor subdivision creating not more than two lots fronting on an existing street, not involving any new street erode, or the extension of municipal facilities, or the creation of public improvements, and not adversely affecting the remainder of the parcel or joint property, and not in conflict with any provision or portion of the comprehensive plan, official zoning ordinance, or other pertinent regulations. Minor subdivisions include lot line adjustments and simple conveyances as defined herein. Lot line adjustment. Basically defined as I just described.
Exactly.
And we will get you a copy of the updated definitions as well. Okay, that can probably happen soon.
Other questions?
Would a minor lot line adjustment allow splitting an oversized property if there are no land developments on either property and leaving an empty lot?
No, that would not be considered a minor plan though. They have to submit preliminary files.
Is it just when you shift a lot line between your property?
Okay, thanks.
Jim, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a big question. During the development of the Form Based Code, which happened in this room over eons ago, and lasted for eons, the subject of presentation requirements, submission requirements came up over and over and over again. And in the end, Sean, who was leading that effort, sort of shepherding us through the nuts and bolts of that effort, and the representative at the time of the county planning commission, assured us that the time would come when the SALDO was rewritten to address the glaring deficiency of the SALDO, which is, what is the damn thing going to look like? So I noticed that that has not yet been addressed in this document. Maybe it's in a section that we don't yet have. But I'm here to say, we really need to have, in the era of Form Based Code, we really have to address the form. We can't just address all the other technical, more or less engineering characteristics, which are all important, but don't even begin to address the form part of the Form Based Code. So at what point in a, in the process of, processing, excuse me, of an application, do we require the applicant to make a clean breast of what his project is going to look like? I would propose that that time is in the preliminary plan, not the tentative plan, if there is such a thing, where an arrangement of boxes on a site plan is really sufficient to explore the gross reality of the idea that is trying to be presented. But certainly, but certainly before the final plan, at which point major decisions have been made by the developer and approved by the borough. So the horse is out of the barn by the time we get to the final plan submission, really it's a matter of tidying up little details here and there. So my thought is that in the preliminary plan, on the development of the preliminary plan, it's time to make with the reality of the form. So I would request that this document be drawn to include that requirement. This is big, because this means that the developer is going to have to get serious about the look and feel of the thing that he's proposing to build. But if we don't do it, the door to the barn is wide open.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense at the preliminary plan level, yeah. And thanks for pointing that out, because that is something I talked about with a handful of other folks, and just hadn't had a chance to share up all the stuff on this. Given this is October 19th draft. Yeah, I think that's great feedback and something that makes sense to look at for the preliminary plan submission requirement.
Thanks for hanging on to the institutional memory of Narbor.
We're not done. I have a question that's related, and it's a relay question, because I know Jim or Heidi is going to speak more eloquently to it. But often we've, in terms of submission required, or gave, actually, we talked about this. We talk sometimes about the importance of an applicant showing us the context of a block in which their project is being located, not just the site. So if they're, you know, developing a property, they know the block, they might provide some diagram of the whole block. They might provide photos of the whole block. And the reason for that is two-fold. One is it, it reminds us of what we're looking at, because many of the, not many, but some of the basic metrics of Form Based Code are contextual. They depend on what's happening in that block. But the other reason is, which we all remember from grad school, if you have to draw, you have to look at it. You have to think about it. And it's, you know, like drawing on a lot without having the field view of what's happening across the street or in all the other lots in the block is a very abstract exercise. But drawing on a block on a lot, when you also have to think about, gee, where are the setbacks in the other buildings? Or all of a sudden, it's a different exercise. And so it forces the applicant to think a little bit more about what they're trying to fit into. And then when we are, believe me, it works. If you've gone to architecture school, it works. And it forces us, and it gives us the opportunity to see a little bit more of the context. More than I thought I would, but you guys often talk about this.
Right, we always talk about this, unless we get really boring. But as we look at submissions, we're looking at site plans that give no hint as to what's next door, much less down the street. So if we're trying to design cohesive blocks, which is what we're trying to do, we have to have that, and as Todd says, we have to get the, we have to force the developer, the proposer, to look at in black and white what the impact of his development, her development is going to be on a whole, at a block scale, even a borough-wide scale, but certainly a block scale. So that they say, oh my God, you know, this, my buildings all poke out too far in relation to the other buildings on the block, that kind of stuff. That's what urban planning is about in the end. It's not about the diameter of a pipe that's on the ground. As important as that is, without doubt.
And of course, the developer will say to that, well, it's way too early for you to make me commit to those decisions, but I think we have to. And actually, I saw very early in the process the selections for the exterior materials on 114 Forest Avenue, you know, very early in the approval process. So at least in one example, I saw that this can be done and developers can commit to it, but there will be considerable pushback from developers on this idea, but I think we have to do it. We've been burned too many times, you know, by approving a red tag along and finding out later on that it has some nasty, you know, aspects of it.
Bye, Nate.
Please, I'm sorry.
So yeah, I think.
Samantha, we're very casual here. Just feel free to talk to him whenever you have an opportunity. We don't have.
Oh, my God, I'm used to going to council meetings.
No, this is not a council meeting.
So I guess I'll just address, so in that case, can I say people's first names?
Sure, yes.
Okay, so just Dave's comment. Yeah, I think that architectural review will help deal with some of those issues as well. And I think it's part of the architectural review. We would want to know the exterior materials used in the construction. To the comment, and make sure my room's first name's correctly, Jim?
Jim.
All right, that Todd and Jim brought up. So I think the thing I want to be careful of, and I defer to Chloe and Kevin and Eric, since they work in multiple towns, first some advice on this. There are certain things that we want, but also certain things that, you know, we can legally ask for and legally would be able to ask for. And I'll just say, in my, in the three towns I've worked for before this, and the other land development plans I've seen in other towns, I've never seen a land development plan where the other properties are detailed out at all. So I'm not saying that it can't be done, I'm just saying that I haven't seen it done. One of the things I love about Narbor is Narbor residents are afraid to do things other places haven't done. Well, today is a very good thing, but I also want to make sure we're not committing to something that we can't legally make a developer do, and that's the reason why other places don't do it.
Well, no developer's going to be happy about how you do this. But we're not here to make them happy. We're here to make the residents of the town happy. I guess that's my rejoinder.
Wait, wait, Dave, David, go ahead, Howard.
In modern digital era, the borough may not be acute.
Yeah.
Because era of photography, they can trace a lot of these features in an afternoon.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to ask for a grading plan for the entire block, because I'm happy to say, you know, what.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, for sketching over photographs.
It's like a figure round of an elevation.
That's what's convenient, is don't require them to survey the whole block. Because that is expensive and time consuming, but they can do like that. Well, I was going to clarify, like, what exactly should we ask for for the whole block? Like photographs, I think, is a nice thing to ask for. It's so easy to take a couple of digital photos, and it does get at what you want. Like, if they take a minute to say, okay, what's a nice angle to capture what's here, it doesn't make them take a look at it.
Right.
And have something to share with everyone.
And it's interesting, when we had to do the survey for the historic district, we had to take original photos. We couldn't use street view.
Right.
And the reason was to force us to come out and look at the buildings as they are now. So that's an important principle. So yeah, just go out and take pictures here.
But I think it goes beyond just pictures. I think there has to be, at a minimum, a street elevation that shows the property being proposed in at least one or two houses on either side of the property in elevation, along with the elevation of the front facade of the proposed development. And again, maybe this is a generational thing, but I need to see things in elevation. And it's, when you see it in that flat projection, that you see the relative proportions, where it becomes meaningful, in a way that just taking a bunch of photographs of the street doesn't do it.
I was just going to say, I think Samantha was saying something about not being done in other places. And, I mean, when I think about what this means, and I agree with all of you, that this should be.
should be part of the review, that this sort of falls under the category of a datum. You know, you see what the average, not, you know, you have to, of course, a plural of datum is data, people are confused, but you see the way things sort of line up or don't line up. And this goes back to like, I think, architecture of the 1980s, post-modernism, when they started like looking at, you know, visual fabrics and ideas like that, like maybe Mother Grace was doing that, I don't know. But not to try to equate it to some historical movement, but I do think that it is something that does sort of tease out the idea of a fabric. You could maybe even take it a little bit further with some of the digital technology that we have today. And there's a lot of the casting of shadows going on and, you know, if you have a building that's way out of scale and it casts a shadow on the, you know, house across the street or something like that, I don't know how far you want to go with it, but, you know, there are so many layers of information that can be uncovered by developing that larger view of a property.
We don't have to ask for too many layers of information. We just need to ask for one or two so that we can see what we're going to get. A street elevation, which is, as has been pointed out, is a relatively easy thing to produce these days, is all you need.
You can see a lot with massing, honestly. If you have a row of buildings and you're looking at a perspective view and there's an empty lot and you can put a box in there that's somewhat reflective of what you're planning, I mean, you could see a lot.
I think massing is just the very start of the process.
Yeah, but...
I would be reluctant, you know, based on the intent of the Form-Based Code to approve a project that's on a massing diagram.
But you're just approving a sketch plan, you're not approving, or a preliminary plan, you're not approving the design.
But the problem is, as Jim said, you know, later on, you know, when you're too far into the process, it gets very hard to steer that aircraft carrier in another direction if you don't like what you're seeing.
We've recently looked at a project, I won't name it, but it's a recently submitted and reviewed project where the submission didn't even extend beyond the property line of the subject property. And the outsized elevations that we were being shown, had they been seen in the context of even just the buildings on either side, anybody would have said, oh, smokes, look at that.
So if I understand what you're asking for, it's for the preliminary plan submission, perhaps to have a new paragraph, I would suggest perhaps paragraph one to supersede subdivision and land development. And paragraph one would actually then be something about context, right, the site context or development context, which would be the figured round plan perhaps for the block in question in an urban context or some radius. And it sounds like people want an elevation for the street, which, you know, maybe could be a composite photograph, because I don't know how to draw all elevations in, right? But, you know, with the subject property shown, is that what people are asking for basically?
Yeah, I think so.
I do.
I'm asking for a joint elevation, but that's just me.
So I guess part of the challenge for me is admittedly, I came from an environment that had nowhere near as much development as Norbert, but experience in the last two years. And the mindset of development in my prior employment was the tax base was not doing great, and thus development was seen as an opportunity to build upon the tax base. And so in my prior employment, yes, you did want to make sure, like, obviously the number one goal is to look out for the best interest of the residents. But my prior, in my previous employment, part of that also meant building up the tax base for residents to avoid tax increases and all that kind of thing. So to that end, developers were given a little more leniency than Norbert's SADO allows for. So just keep in mind, that's the background I'm coming from on this. So I will admit, things that seem, in excess of what I've seen in the past, I'm going to be a little bit more skeptical or resistant to. At the end of the day, you all are the planning commission, and the direction you want to go, I'll be happy to talk to the borough solicitor, and we can legally require or not. I just, again, want to put that disclaimer that we can only ask from developers what we can legally make them do, but it's a question that we could ask.
Well, I think the other aspect of this is, if you're working with a Euclidian code, the basis of the code is just, you know, just the numbers, ma'am, you know, just, you know, give us the block coverage and the geometric analysis and you're done. You know, when we were forging new ground with the Form-Based Code, the whole point of it was the form. And it seems to me that if we don't inject that into the SADO process pretty early on, that we're missing a major function of what we were trying to accomplish with the Form-Based Code.
True, and I agree that I think the architectural review that Jim proposed, putting in the preliminary, will be a great step in that direction of trying to accomplish that goal. I just wonder if asking a developer to do anything beyond any sort of, you know, basic vote, even, I just wonder if this request, I'd be going a little bit beyond that. And again, I wonder if it's something, I've seen developers have be required to provide architectural review and architectural designs before. I've just never seen or heard a developer having to provide information about adjoining properties as part of the land development review process.
Yeah, to jump in on that, everyone.
Kevin and Eric are both mine to say.
Okay, sorry.
All right, guys. If I could jump in here.
Hang on. This is a second, I've got to do something.
We want to hear you, but we can't.
Yeah, just a second. Okay, Kevin, you're on.
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah.
Awesome. Awesome. I appreciate the conversation, just providing my two cents on other municipalities and my past experience with land developments, or whatever they're called. I've seen applicants be required to provide some sort of aspect on adjacent properties or existing block faces, where it would require that in terms of front setbacks only. The city of Philadelphia requires buildings to be set back kind of in between adjacent properties. So if property to the left is 10 feet, property to the right, you can be within that 10 to 12 feet range. That's kind of the only time I've ever seen any sort of, see adjacent properties. And to that point, to that specific point, Norbert provides a front setback, so that obviously wouldn't be necessary. I have worked in other municipalities similar to Norbert, some that are more agriculturally based, I've just never seen any type of the request to the level of detail that we're discussing. I think that, in my opinion, you're talking about is already pretty well thought and regulated through, you know, the front facade type and the building types. And beyond that, I think we're really putting too much responsibility on the applicant. That's just my two cents.
Kevin. Again, I was just going to, I can build, just maybe build off of that. I can't say that I have seen a requirement where, you know, you're going too detailed, you know, in the surrounding properties. Now, that being said, you do have a Form-Based Code, you know, so if you're going to require the applicant to be demonstrating or showing kind of, some kind of rendering of the surrounding area, I just, the very least, would think you want to make sure it's connected directly to demonstrating compliance with some of the zoning code requirements. You know, so if there's requirements that have to do with the setback, have to do with the frontage of the building relative to other properties on the street, you know, then you don't want to tie it right into that code. But just a blanket, you know, rendering of multiple properties is not something I've seen. But, you know, the Form-Based Code is a little more intermixed with all the other properties, just want to make sure it's tied in together. And as for the timing, between like a sketch plan, preliminary plan, and a final plan, you know, my take on a sketch plan is it's a pretty basic level, it is more of the squares on the page. By the time you start getting into a preliminary, preliminary plan, you know, that's when your plan starts to be developed and where facades at that point would start to be prepared. And then by the time you get to a final plan, that's where you're talking the fine details of what a frontage would look like. But just while, to that end, we're worried about getting too far down the line, a lot of places, you know, Norbert approves a sketch plan, that's what we've been doing. Almost everywhere else I work, you don't approve a sketch plan. A sketch plan comes in for comment from staff, from planning commissions, but it doesn't commit, you know, anybody to, you know, to a design. It's a type of feedback, and then preliminary plan is when, you know, everything starts to get locked in. So just kind of my thoughts so far.
And Eric, I think that's what Samantha was discussing earlier, that that...
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to belabor this a lot because I want to be conscious of the time, and I think there's one or two other aspects of this I'm going to take a little bit of conversation that I was going to raise. But I guess, despite the fact that this isn't a common requirement, or even one that our team has experienced very much, I mean, it's not something that sort of just arbitrarily come up tonight. It's come up after five years of reviewing projects under the Form-Based Code. And if you needed to tie it to our code for any reason, or SADO does have in its statement of intent or its goals, you know, the language about ensuring that development conforms to the character of the community. And so this is something that would help us assess. If that is language that's not actionable anyway, then it shouldn't be in the code, I would say. So if it's in the code, I think it's fair to ask for information that helps us understand that. I think, I don't want to belabor this anymore. Do you have a...
No, I'm sorry, I'm just, I don't have my hands when I raised.
Maybe there's something I can add here to, at least for tonight, to get us to a good stopping point on these two things. Why don't I do two things? Number one, I do think myself, and I don't necessarily want to speak with everyone else, but at least I feel pretty good about putting a requirement in for the preliminary plan for architecturals and facades. And then I can ask the borough solicitor what sort of legal enforcement we would have in terms of requiring any depiction or description of adjoining properties or other properties in the same area. And that way we know the limit of what we can legally require.
You know, you can ask for stuff and is someone going to like not develop here because they have provided? Or is someone going to take the borough to court because they have provided a drawing? I mean, I think that's...
We have, we have an embarrassment of opportunities for people to come into our town and make money. Unlike maybe your prior experience where you were looking for investment from outside, we are fending off Attila de Hunn here.
True, I definitely notice that a lot.
A whole different kind of chemistry. And it's Attila de Hunn who's showed his ugly face a few times in recent years around the town, that is, is the focus of most of our, of most of our thinking on this Form-Based Code.
Yeah, and if we weed out a few of these guys by some of these requirements, that's not...
I wouldn't ever say requirement, tentative is to weed out. I think the thing that's, John, is like, what would, what would he anticipate would happen if we had the requirements? Would there be problems? That's all. I wouldn't ask him if it's legal or not.
Well, I mean, I can't in good faith that the borough manager recommends something that is, that would legally hold up.
Wow, wow. Right, but I guess, you know, the other question is just, is it illegal?
Well, yeah, that's a bad question.
Instead of trying to, instead of trying to like find all the case law that might justify it, because I do think, you know, it is site planning 101 typically, right? Show me the context of the site. So I don't, personally, it doesn't seem that person to me, but I'm a little okay.
Is it, are we going to advance the conversation? Because I really, it's kind of, I want to...
Well, a new, a new item on this, but very short and sweet. I noticed in here, the text talks about the scale of the submission being at least one inch to 50 feet, and that's way too small a scale. Should be at least one, one to 20.
Is that what we commonly get?
I don't know what we commonly get, but I know one to 50th for the slightest of the lots that we typically have is ridiculous. I mean, the plans that I'll pass out for a moment are one to 20, and you'll see something half of this size is unusable as a submission.
One to 50 is what you would use in a cornfield development in the country somewhere, where you're showing 500 acres, something like that.
Yeah, think about it, if a lot is 50 feet or 60 feet, that means you can grow your lot at one inch, which, you know, one to 20 even seems to be too. I mean, we, often our developments do lots that are like 200 feet by 200 feet, so you can see that scale is just as low.
Which fills up about, you know, most of, in half by leverage.
Yeah. I wanted to ask about the two things that are similar, but maybe not exactly related. One is, in your view of how the tenant sketch should work, in the kind of process in which you would try to iron out technical issues with your team before it came to the planning commission, I know that the language says the planning commission can recommend a council to do this too. So I guess, how, would all this work within 90 days? And then just, wait, let me ask the second question, because you might, you might have a way to answer them both. Revisions to plans number 11, revisions to a preliminary plan shall proceed as follows. It doesn't really outline a review process for revisions to plans. And it's one of the things Samantha and I have talked about, is we kind of get jammed when people submit revisions like a week before meeting that are big changes. So I guess, the timing to make sure there's enough time to review both of these kinds of applications, the tentative and a revision, is something I would like to hear more about.
Sure, and actually, yeah, just want to take here a quick technical thing. I want to make sure that Kevin and Eric have a copy of the documents that we are discussing here. Chloe, while I answer our last question, would you be able to...
Sure.
All right, so yeah, one of the biggest things that definitely, the devil's borough staff, and I think I can safely speak for everyone on this one, is dealing with revised plans or resubmissions, especially trying to accommodate them within the 90-day timeframe. So I think, you know, that is one of the things, again, and there are two things that happened in my prior employment that dealt with that. One was, someone didn't really start their timer on the 90 days until after they had that meeting with borough staff to sort out the will complies and the waivers and the zoning hearing board and stuff. The other way that it was handled, and it's something, you know, even with our current SADO, we could start doing in Norbert Borough, is basically, I mean, developers were, and again, you all know the past, did you share any past experience here that I didn't know about? My last job was it would get away with telling developers, if you don't give us an extension on the 90 days, we're just going to deny your plan because you're in violation of, you know, these zoning issues or these SADO waivers that we haven't worked out yet. I don't know if that would be able to apply to every plan that comes through here in Norbert though. So something the borough solicitor had mentioned to me, was the idea of just requiring as soon as someone submits a plan application, also submitting an extension of the, of the 90-day clock upon application to help save some of these issues we seem to run into with that. So those are two, those are a few solutions I would offer to that question.
Can I clarify one thing, just that in terms of working out all the technical issues, making sure the engineer and the foot office are, looked through everything and everything compliant, that would be for the preliminary plan and not for the tentative sketch plan?
I thought I was reading that in the tentative phase. Or I thought, I'm sorry, I thought Samantha was describing that as you would try to iron all those things out as a tentative phase before. So did I misunderstand what you're saying, Samantha? So did I misunderstand what you're saying, Samantha?
Let's see. I mean, tell the groups what to do. I don't know, I would be okay with doing that even at the tentative plan phase, but if someone has something really, you know, obviously up with the, I don't know, I mean, again, I kind of defer to the group. I don't, I don't have a strong feeling on that one. So I'm willing to go whichever way the staff thinks we can go, whichever way the planning commission wants to go. If we want to impart it out in the tentative or preliminary phase.
Well, actually, the way this is written is it gives us the job of making sure the application is conforms to this, to the comprehensive plan and relevant standards of the code. That's, that's number 133-6C that gives us that job. So I don't think we want that job. But I think, I think the more the staff can wring all the errors out of the application before we see it, the better.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that. Let's see, 133-6C you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe that's something where that, maybe those first two sentences, let's see.
So when there isn't a requirement for a tentative sketch plan, it, it, I think you may not necessarily require that the engineer and code officer review it.
I don't think it'd be, I mean, I defer to, so engineering code officer on this, I want to put words in their mouth. I don't think it'd be the end of the world if they reviewed the sketch plan insofar as the sketch plan requirements go. Because again, if someone has something that, again, an interest is, you know, making life easier on both the planning commission and in this case, the developer as well, if there's something like blatantly wrong that we can identify in the tentative phase, I'd almost rather catch it there than have something go, go on to preliminary or really going to be spending time and they're really going to be spending money on engineering and all that. But I'd love to know if Eric had on that as well.
I think that a lot of these land developments come in to me to the even big, formal tentative sketch through a consultation or a Zoom call. So I'll try and get out as much as I can to steer it in the right direction from strictly code stamp. And to speak on kind of the overall, my only concern, not what's required, it's, it's the timeliness. Again, I can't be significant change in three or four business days. So what we do to make sure the lines coincide with an appropriate deadline, I'm all for it.
Oh, yeah, that was a question Todd asked. I don't think I adequately answered earlier about how to handle a resubmission versus a revision. And I don't know if we could do it in the SADO or not, but maybe having more of the definition of what constitutes a revision versus a resubmission. Because let's say someone makes a tentative and they come to you all for preliminary and you all have substantive, what I'll call just for today's purposes, substantive changes for the applicant. I mean, that's almost going to require, in my opinion, the same level of effort for Eric and Kevin to go back and re-review it if they're making substantial changes to it. So I would, again, if we can legally make it work, I would love to see some delineation between something that's just a revised plan versus something that we would just have to say, look, there's so much you have to do to this that you just need to resubmit and start the 90 days all over, all over again. And Eric and Kevin, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that as well?
I would second that, that, that take. You know, it's, we've got to review a plan. We have, there's, you know, it has to be submitted X amount of days before a planning commission. But if people come in with, you know, minor, with major changes of the plan, it, it does take another cycle of time to get through that. And you're right, I don't know if there really is any kind of clear definition at the moment about what constitutes like a major change, how far out that has to be. That would be a good point to clarify.
And the only thing that I can think of is if Eric and I immediately just skim over the resubmission and make that determination in specific properties, but the one that came in recently where the facade information was missing, that literally is not my review for new development, is using that Excel sheet. And I think before it was due. So it would have been nice if I could say, hey, listen, there's, we need to restart 30 days or restart an entire review cycle. But drop the gun and not put the responsibility on Michelle or Missy at the office to accept it, say it's good, you know, can you get this done? It'd be nice if we actually looked at it and said, this is going to take 15 minutes or this is going to take two, three hours.
Your solicitor provided a sentence that Laura Marion uses that was, the submission of a preliminary or final plan, which in the opinion of the township supervisors has been substantially revised, shall constitute a new and separate submission. And Michelle and Erin and I talked about that and said, it doesn't make any sense for council to be making a determination about whether this is a new submit, substantially changed from the previous submission. It seems like out of their purview and a waste of their time. Is there any way to, can we say like, in the opinion of the borough manager or the code enforcement officer or something like that and use this sentence? So I, that is written in there as a draft and with my notes, say checklist solicitor. Can we take this language and make it more practical? Like have someone in the office say, look, this is, this is.
I would say if you're going to make a point person, it should be, you know, Kevin and I could both have input into it, but I think it probably is best as somebody in the administration in the office as the designated individual.
Designated decider.
Yeah, I think, I mean, yeah. I think it would, I think it would have to be my responsibility with consultation with the planning commission, Eric and Kevin and Holly.
And then I still think, even if it's not, even if it's a, if it's a revision and not a resubmission, there still needs to be a schedule that provides time, you know, at the very least, whoever needs to review it to review it. Like we've had literally them come in Fridays before planning commission. And even if it's just a revision, that's not acceptable. There need, there needs to be more time.
Yeah, as, as you've come to learn about me, you know, and I'm sure a lot of you have as well, I'm a big believer in, you know, packets generally for council on Sunday at the Friday before a meeting. And it takes the day out suddenly, you know, figure things out, especially if land is a lot of degrees. I think that's a little of a cultural thing with the borough that we allow developers to do that. And I agree that has to.
I guess for tonight, I'd say a resubmission versus amendment or whatever needs more work in terms of clarifying what's what and the timeframe. Going back to the tentative, I'm going to get out of the rut of the way we think about things here. What popped into my head is other places I consult with in other states. So just, I know that's different. But I know of a jurisdiction that cannot require legally, but uses all of its might to encourage developers of a certain scale to come in for a charrette.
Yeah.
Which is, and in, and in their case, it's a staff, it's a, it's a large jurisdiction with a huge staff. And so it's, it's an inter-agency charrette. And it's, and it's, they say it's like free advice, free of charge. And I think if, you know, I was getting picky about the tentative sketch, but if we were to kind of look at it in a different way, if we say, no, the tentative sketch is really a charrette.
Yeah.
And it's not about whether you comply with the code. Maybe there's, maybe that's an idea we, and then, but see, then you know where that leads. That leads to requesting the things we were talking about earlier.
That's true, yeah.
Right?
That's really important.
Because what you're really talking about there is like not whether or not your lot is 60 feet or 61 feet. It's about like, well, like here's the block. So how are you going to fit into this block? Or you want to adjust your property, you know, it, it begins to be that contextual conversation.
Philadelphia does that through the mechanism of the Industrial Development Corporation, I think it's called. Which for large institutional projects, which is what I did most of my career, you can bring together all the, all the stakeholders into a big room in the municipal services building someplace. And everyone gets a shot at the proposal. And it's a big kumbaya thing. And what always in my experience came out of that with university work and hospital work was a much clearer understanding of what the issues, what the big issues were. And then everybody would be able to go back home to their respective offices and with a, with a whole new concept of what the project was and what its issues were. Very effective, didn't cost much to do it. A big pot of coffee was all it took.
Is that scalable downwards to the kind of development that we're talking about here? Or is it really overkill?
Well, I would say that every time that we have engaged an applicant in a powwow.
No, you're right, you're right.
It's had, it's had, it's paid huge dividends. And it costs us time to, to have an informal review, but boy, it's, it's, it pays all the time.
Yeah, I think what, what you're all describing on how to, you know, approach the tentative plan is the, if not the letter of the law, the spirit of the law in terms of what a tentative sketch plan is supposed to be, yeah.
If we remove the letter out and make it more about the spirit.
Yeah, yeah.
We make it narrow off.
Yeah.
So do we, do we require that in the preliminary or do we still re-suggest it? Can we require it?
At the sketch plan level?
Yeah, the tentative sketch.
And the whole, there's, there's issues with requiring a sketch plan at all. But I think a lot of applicants want to do it, you know, and appreciate the opportunity to have a conversation before they've dumped a lot of money into a project. Say, here's my idea, here's what I'm thinking about. What do you think? What are the issues that I'm going to run up against? And it's your chance to say, cool idea, like here's, here's what we think, you know, here's some issues to consider. Without voting on anything, without them investing their right to do anything in particular, but to get, get out on the right foot on whatever project.
Or vice versa, if it's something you know you're not going to like. And then you're like, oh, I'm going to.
Yeah, I guess the inside here is if it's not going to be like a technical review, then let's just push it as hard as we can into the quality and review.
Great, yeah. I think that's a good approach, yeah. When you just run it that way, yeah.
It's an interesting thing to think about if one homeowner had gone that route and we were all sitting around the table looking at, well, here, I'd like to put 12 units out here, what do you think? It would have been an interesting first session.
Yeah, it would have been good. Yeah, I got, I'm certainly not at this point in Norbert nor would I want this responsibility unless the planning commission ever delegated it to me. Like after a few years in my last job, I got to a point where I kind of had a sense of what the planning commission and borough council residents were looking for and could, could tell developers even when doing quantitative meeting that, hey, yeah, this might, you know, you have these zoning issues and, oh, by the way, I think the planning commission and council are going to hate this. You're not going to get any waivers or zoning relief, so you just need to know that now. You know, and maybe someday I'll get to that place in Norbert, but I would never explicitly take on that role.
You know, it's not, we're going to hate something and, you know.
I don't want to scare you, but the planning commission chairs will feel over.
It's like anything, we're going to die of KFC though. Well, maybe you guys, is that enough for you guys to work with on those two questions? I did have one other thing and then I'll ask those other questions. In the preliminary submission requirements, which I think are on page five on the printout I've got, it talks about a list of dimensional and density requirements of the applicable zoning district. Or it kind of taught, or statements show, I mean, it talks about information you're to, you're to provide to show that you are compliant with the code. I think that this language should refer to our code as it is written. And so we talk about use requirements, site plan requirements, building design requirements, and supplemental regulations. And I think that we should explicitly use terms in our zoning code. Demonstrate how you're compliant with the use regulations. Demonstrate how you're compliant with the site plan regulations. Demonstrate how you're compliant with the building design and so forth. Density, we, we, we don't even have traditional density requirements. So having that in the SADO is, is not the best language to help people understand what we're looking for. I mean, the code is incredibly logical when you actually follow it through as an exercise. And that's what people should be doing. The parts are really amazing. So, you know, if we tell them to approach it like a form-based code, not about a standard zoning code, that will help them as well. I think that's all I've got of my notes. I urge you all to do this. If others can do it, just mark this off and send it back. Like I have a few technical comments that I don't really want to bring up.
Where should we send it, Todd?
Send it to me.
Send it to the club.
Okay.
Thank you, Holly.
Sure.
Okay. Is there anything else you would ask us about this?
Uh, no, for SADO. Here, we also have, but you didn't see it because we're going to discuss this next week with Eric and Kevin and then get a draft after that, is the design requirements of the SADO. But I noticed something as I was reviewing that. To tie your agenda items together and thinking about some of your ideas for infill housing, there's a lot of stuff in the design requirements of the SADO. I know many of the things you're talking about infill are not about lot, lotting necessarily, but the, the sort of the stuff about the intention and the lot's design all says, you know, it shouldn't create landlocked areas, no flag lots. You know, all lots shall have straight frontage, et cetera. That kind of thing is in the design section of the SADO. And I wonder if some of the is going to, some of the sort of thinking about that is going to change with thinking about some of the infill housing proposals, if we want to sort of realign the language and the design requirements to fit a little better with some of what you're thinking about now. And I know that's not approved or changed, but it just sort of got me thinking about it as I was reading through that. So just something to mull over.
Well, I hope some of that can become more clear in the next couple of months.
Yeah.
In which case, yeah.
Sounds good.
And some of the things that we might wind up working on might absolutely need to be filtered into the SADO too.
Right.
Okay. So the other item on our agenda, if there's nothing else on this, so thank you all, thank you both. When, when do you, well, I was going to say, when do you think we would see the design requirements? But how close are you to? Those are going to be a lot more to chew on.
There's going to be a lot more to chew on. I can give you more information after our meeting that is scheduled for next Tuesday. Daytime meeting with Michelle, Eric and.
Yeah, Tuesday, next Tuesday at 9 o'clock.
So once we meet, we can go and clear how close we are. Just sharing that with all of you.
Okay. All right, we will wait.
We'll let you know.
At the edge of our seats.
Okay. Don't fall off while you're there.
Okay, so let's then move on to our next item, which is further to conversation with infill housing and zoning revision issues. One of the things I'd like to report as a preface to this all is Samantha and I met the other day last week to kind of map out potential timeframe for moving this all along. And I think what we mapped out is that our, our aggressive goal would be to actually have text changes, like literal code changes that could be given to council for consideration for advertising in January, which is two months and two weeks or so from now, which is almost as humanly possible as this could happen.
And I think that's going to depend on two things. It's going to depend on how many changes the planning, how long, how much discussion the planning commission has on, obviously. And I think too, it's going to tie in somewhat, but how much discussion we end up having on the SADO. Because I do believe a lot of the staff resources right now are with planning and with the engineer and zoning officer are focused on getting the SADO done for you all. So I think those two things will kind of flow a little bit together. But I do think any discussion the planning commission can have while the staff are working on finishing up the SADO will put us in a good position so that when, you know, when you really need the staff support, that actually draws. the staff support to actually draw the language on infill housing, who at least already have some guidance and the planning commission will already hashed a lot of things out by that hopefully.
So my hope would be in part to respect the limited throughput that the guidance took, really, you know, triage and focus on the most important changes, the ones that are most ready to move, to move along, so.
Yeah, so if I may just...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if we keep the focus on the zoning, just on these two most time-sensitive issues for the moment, you know, staff do have a number of other zoning amendments we would like to present to the planning commission next year, but again, that's not going to happen until we get to the SADO. So for the sake of time sensitivity, that would be my recommendation to focus on the infill housing and the, what was the other?
Accessory dwelling.
Yeah, accessory dwelling units. And then we can consider, not necessarily at our leisure, but, you know, not quite so much under the gun, consider the other zoning changes staff would have for you all.
Okay. So, and the other bit of preliminary information is, this topic is still on the agenda for the council's workshop session on Wednesday.
On when?
Wednesday, November 30th. And so I encourage you to observe that meeting or take part in that meeting, but that's our chance to get feedback from council and get a sense of what issues we really should try to bring home, and which ones might need a little more time to work on. I would just say, parenthetically, there was an interesting amount of conversation about the views at the council candidates forum, in and of all, of all things. And a little bit of conversation about accessory dwellings. So tonight, in order to help us get there and not, and kind of use our time well, I had maintained a list of some of the things that, sort of the to-do list of getting these zoning issues wrapped up. And two of the big ones are, well, there's three big ones, two of which I think were close to. One is overall building coverage in a situation where we allow multiple buildings in a lot. Right now, we just allow one building in a lot, we're proposing to allow multiple buildings in the lot. What is the overall building coverage we would allow? Are the ratios we have now okay, or should we allow a larger ratio for various reasons? Second is lot widths for twins. Can we allow smaller widths or have no minimum width so that we got smaller twins? I think we'd run into issues between minimum widths, maximum widths, facade sizes, lot depths, and is there an easy fix to that? A third one is impervious coverage ratios. I know Jennifer and Adam are looking at this, but I'm not sure that we're close to that yet. So those are the three big issues, I think. Oh, and of course, we've been, Dave has been studying how the rules we've proposed for accessory dwelling units could actually work on a couple of potential properties. I also have, the last item for us to consider is a quick fix to the definition of facade area to clarify the ambiguity questions, Adam, that you raised at our last meeting when we were talking about 146 Marion. I'd like to share that with you to see if you support it and would support including it in the recommendations we offered to council, so. Not sure what to begin with. Let me begin with facade area, because I think we can dispense with that pretty quickly, pretty simple. The question on, that we faced when we reviewed 146 Marion was which planes count as the facade and how are they measured? And we were, how is the front facade measured? And that comes into play because we have a maximum facade size allowed for the front facade, which is a, you know, percentage of the prevailing front facade. And we got into a question about whether or not simply walls within six feet of the front facade or other walls might be counted. And zoning officers' determination was that only walls within six feet of the front facade could be counted. Some of us felt there was ambiguity in the code language, and so the best thing to do is to fix the code language to remove ambiguity and to reflect our intentions. And so what I've proposed is to change the definition of facade area to essentially replace the six-foot metric with second lot layer, so that the calculation of the front facade would not be all of the vertical planes with, that are on the front edge line or within six feet, which is the strict interpretation we could know. And it would be all of the vertical facades that are on the front edge line or substantively parallel to it within the second lot layer, which in, I believe, in all zoning districts is 30 feet back from the front edge line. Essentially what we'd do is move the goalposts from six feet to 30 feet to boil it down. And so that means for an application like 146 Marion or the ones we saw on Seabine, that a lot of those big facades that hovered right beyond six feet or at six feet couldn't be built, that bolt would have to be pushed back. So what I'd like to ask is if there's support for that amendment being proposed, if so, I'll include it in the amendments we proposed to council.
I think that's a great idea.
Well, you were there when we invented it, so.
That's one of the reasons.
I want to hear from Adam. Adam, you pointed out the ambiguity, we didn't quite grasp it when we were talking about it, but what do you think about it?
I think that, if I understand correctly, it's what regulate, the building does have to be more or less within this range of size of the existing houses or structures on the block.
Correct, within the second.
Yeah, because they're going to be measured the same way, whatever's within 30 feet or within the second lot layer for their elevations.
We're not going to re-measure the houses. We're going to use the current way the houses are measured because it's already in...
Well, don't we have to measure the new structure and the existing structures according to same terms?
No, we don't have to.
Doesn't that seem problematic?
Not really, we're already offering them 15% allowance beyond that number anyway, you know, it's also, it's already kind of squishy what that number represents.
I can't see, I can see how it's sort of potentially odd, but I don't see that it's problematic. We're simply saying we have a data we're providing, which is...
Right, but we're not measuring, you're not, I mean, okay, so we're looking at the block, we're saying there's a metric, which is the square footage of the elevation average for the block, right?
Yeah.
And then this new structure has to be within 15% of the average.
Right.
And, which right there, by the way, there's some issues with outliers, but we're saying we're going to calculate it different than all the other structures, and we're going to include more in the calculation than we do for the other structures.
So the new building, yeah.
Yeah, so that, I, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me to just do it the same way for every structure. This should be calculated the same way for each of them.
Right now, applicants have to do this calculation.
And again, I don't think that that, like, seeing what these site plans include, like the amount of work that goes into them, I don't know that that calculation is really so burdensome compared to all the rest of the work they're doing, but personally, they, like, does, like, if there's 10 houses on the block, how much work is it really to do a rough elevation assessment?
Well, we have data now that we give to applicants for the...
Jim, yes.
I just wanted to remind you, you just touched on it, that we used to have a table 14 in the code that actually listed that hard number with the averages for every block or proportioned to. That table has been removed from the code. We offer them those numbers informally now, you know, because we have, we still have them, but there's nothing that says we have to go on doing that, you know? If we want them to go on and do their own calculations, then I think we could, you know, it's not a big leap to require that they make their own measurements and calculations to decide.
Yeah, the reason it bothered me is because I got on my bike and I rode around and I looked at a lot of blocks, and my, just by eyeballing things, I don't think the difference between measuring the first six feet and measuring the first 30 feet is that different. It's astounding how many buildings don't have projections out, or the projections they have are really minor. The only place you tend to find that is in recent, in buildings with recent additions that tried to follow that six-foot rule, like on Dudley, you know, it's a couple, right? Where they set it back six feet. But if you look at a lot of the traditional, you can go blocks and blocks and you can find, like, I think, for example, my favorite block, Wayne Avenue, has one house where there's a projection that it's a vertical facade that's not within six feet. So I guess I propose that because I was kind of comfortable that the six-foot measurement is actually pretty much what you'll find. I mean, so it didn't seem to make sense to ask people to go back and re-measure things if we had a number that was pretty close, so, I mean, that's why I proposed it. So let's leave it this way, because I want to see how much ground I can move. It sounds like there's an agreement that that second lot layer is a better metric than six feet, and a disagreement about whether we should use our current data, ask people to recalculate facade sizes based on what is within the second lot layer. So I guess we can continue to look about the viability of that, but I think it's progress to say that facade area should be, we should aim towards a way of calculating if that is about the second lot layer, not about six feet, and then figure out whether our current data or whether new data is necessary. That takes into account all that. And so what I encourage you to do is all, go, is you go around the borough, think about, I mean, I, when I thought about this, I just went around and thought about how this rule applied and concluded that six feet actually is pretty much what you get, except in a few other cases. So that's not fair, Adam? So we got halfway there?
Can I?
Yes, Kevin.
Something that I just thought about when you were discussing this, something to keep in mind too, so we don't have any ambiguity in the code, reviewing these elevations as a plane from the front, some exceptions to side yard setbacks. Do you want, this is bay windows, things like that are extending these fireplaces, I mean, technically they'll be part of that second facade plane, do you want to continue to exclude those?
So that's another consideration as well. I mean, when I looked at houses, you know, what I found actually, Kevin, the most complicated thing is there's a lot of houses where the, what we would colloquially call a facade, it's like set back under a porch, and there's another facade that projects in front of it, that's like a sleeping porch or something like that. You actually find as many facades set back six feet as you do advanced six feet. And so it seemed to me like that was an interesting kind of complication that I hadn't really thought about. I wondered how the data reflected all of that. So that's why I think, and I mean, in the bay windows, there's not going to be that many of them, there really aren't, or chimneys, I mean, there's going to be very little area, so I'm not sure. We can think about how to handle those, just, but I think the principle is, it's not six feet that the, that standard of facade size needs to apply to the second lot layer.
Right.
So there's another wrinkle that Kevin has brought to our attention.
So many wrinkles.
Yeah, but see, what I'd like to do is sort of get consensus on at least that, because then the working on the metrics becomes the next one. Okay. So maybe we could spend, let's see if we can spend a little bit of time talking about twin lot widths, see if we can, what I'd like to do is just sort of get consensus on a principle that allows us to go back and write the actual metrics if it seems like a good idea. I don't think we can work out the actual math today, but Jim and Heidi, you've been talking about that. Can you tell us what you're finding or what you'd suggest is kind of a principle for how we should, what the problem is and what kind of general principle we might apply to solve the problem? For twins. I don't mean to look at one or the other.
No, no, I mean, I think we kind of just discussed that there are quite a few twin properties that are smaller than the 3,000 square feet that's in our code now. I guess 1,800...
Yeah, the smallest is in the 1,500s.
You mean the lot size?
Lot size.
Lot size for each twin. 25 feet is not uncommon for width.
For a lot, a building or lot width?
Lot width.
Okay.
And the question is, how, you know, should we revise the code for, an 1,800 square foot minimum lot size? And if so, how deep, should the, could, should the lot be, should there be a minimum area as well, based on width? So, I mean, Iona, Woodbine...
Yeah, some very small twins down in that neighborhood.
Well, let me ask you about the lot width here. It's right that way, the minimum lot width of 25 feet for twins, but are you finding there are lot widths that are that way?
Probably.
Some would be.
Yeah, probably, you know?
I think you would be.
You're saying the current is 25?
The current code minimum is 25 feet.
In 3B, 3C, and 4A.
Right.
4B is 20 feet.
Right. So are you finding lot minimum, or would we be concerned, since we're talking about infill housing, would we be concerned if there was a lot width that was, what's the point of having a minimum lot width? No one's going to build a house that's too narrow to live in.
It's just comfort, so a twin is typically, like, the smallest is usually around 16. I mean, you can go smaller, but 16 feet is the standard, right?
Yeah.
Pennsylvania.
Otherwise, you wind up building rooms that are unfurnishable inside.
Right. So can we assume that one won't do that?
Well, they do in New York and Tokyo.
It's heading that way, but so, but a 16-foot house, you know, without a side porch and a six-foot side yard would be 22 feet.
So there are, smallest lot width for a twin is 17 feet, a couple properties like that.
Where is that?
That is 224 Williams. There's also one on 233 Iona, 17 feet lot width. There are about 10 properties that are 18 feet, a couple under 19, six or seven more that are 20.
Do you know what the side yards are for those?
Side yards?
Like the space between the house and the lot line?
I don't have that, sorry.
Wait, what's that?
We could figure that out though, from the county.
Setbacks, like, by the, the...
Sorry, what was the house number on Williams?
224.
224 Williams, 233 Iona, those are the two properties, 17 foot properties. Each a twin, not to each other, but they're each a twin lot.
You're looking up on the...
Because there's an setback of three feet.
She's looking at this area which has pretty bad...
Yeah, three feet.
So 17-foot lot, you have 14-foot white house, living one foot for the walls, it's like a 13-foot room. Thanks.
Okay.
Oh, I can measure a building, that's not hard.
I guess what I'm wondering is...
Buildings like 15.
The main question is, in order to, what we want to try and do is make it as easy as possible for people, to remove barriers that might be arbitrary for people living infill housing. And so the question is, is the lot width for a twin 25 feet a barrier? And we, how about, would provide a lower, a smaller lot width help in any way? It looks, you know, if it's 22 even, or 20.
Yeah, because, I mean, I think 25 feet was often a single-family lot in a small house neighborhood, so.
Yeah.
That would have side yards on both sides. So if you only have one side yard, you should be able to go at least three foot narrower than that.
22 feet. 22 feet. So you have a seven-foot side yard and a 15-foot structure. I mean, we're interested in trying to encourage smaller buildings, right?
So you could probably go down to 20, I mean. The smallest, right?
Well, we do allow 20. See, the thing is, we do allow 20 in other districts. We do allow 20 in 4B.
Well, shouldn't it be, I mean, I think it might depend on the neighborhood. I mean, it's again, based on form. Do you want to allow someone to have a three-foot side yard when the person next door is a standard single with a seven-foot?
Well, so side yards, you have a matter.
Well, yeah, but that has to do with lot width. I mean, yes, but we do need to dictate.
Right.
Side yard. Which would not be in keeping with what we're talking about regarding Iona and Williams. I mean, they all are very narrow and they're, they're next to each other.
Right. So you're saying those have smaller lot widths because they have left smaller side yards.
It's contextual, yeah.
So I, I think, I think, um, I mean, I mean, that's, that's a good question. I mean, would you also allow, how would you determine if or when you would allow for a smaller side yard?
Well, if it were fully contextual formula, you're, it's whatever the, the constraint is whatever the most constraining element of the formula is, right? So let's just say for the moment that you were going with a 20-foot lot, right? But if the, if you were going to require contextually a wider side yard, then maybe it wouldn't be feasible, right? Because if you had to have a six-foot side yard, you, you would only have, uh, 14 feet left for the house. I mean, you see what I'm saying? Like, but, I mean, that's, that's how, you could have your cake and eat it too. If you have both requirements, it's whichever requirement is more restrictive.
Right.
It's the side yard or the minimum lot width for the design. I guess you would just end up with a really skinny house with a big side yard.
And it, and it may be that we don't need to go down to, just because we happen to have some narrow twins, doesn't mean we need to go that narrow. It's a percentage of the.
Right.
Number that's in the borough and sort of.
Let's just say we, we stay with the seven-foot side yard. Kind of reduce a variable in the conversation. If we did that, would we, is there a, is there, is there an hour lot width that would be acceptable for a twin, like 22 feet?
For a 15-foot white house that are.
Yeah.
Which, you know.
Why not?
Are you?
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I think that the, we, we value green space too. I mean, we, we like density, but we also like green space. And that may be going more into the impervious for the building coverage argument. Like how much rear yard is there and is it a proportional thing?
Well, there's also, um, I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, and I, I start, I hesitate to say this out loud, but, you know, if it's a, if it's a twin and there's only one side yard, do we, does the fire marshal have to weigh in on what a reasonable side yard width is so that a fire can be fought effectively?
But if we're sticking with a seven-foot side yard.
Then I'm not sure. Well, we were starting with about three foot. I'm thinking.
But I said, let's take that off.
Yeah, no, yeah.
To make it easier to talk about.
Yeah.
So it feels like if we were to say, keeping the side yard rules the same, there's room to type to have slightly narrower twin lots. I mean, 22 to 25 can make a difference because that means you, you only have a 44-foot lot rather than a 50-foot lot. As we know, every inch can kind of count. So that's, that's an improvement.
Now, there is another caveat, which has to do with building proportion.
Right.
Height of the building. I mean, none of these twins that we're talking about are taller than two stories flat roof.
Right.
Or maybe a slight pitch. So they're maybe what, 18 feet tall?
So right now we allow, uh, a, a, an 18-foot twin going on a 25-foot lot.
Right.
We're talking about allowing a 15-foot twin.
And we should limit height as well. Because right now 35 feet applies for a wide.
So what, would you say 25 feet? I mean, would you, it's an interesting question. What did we say for cause 25 feet?
I, I know, we just talked about the whole facade rules, so.
Well, the thing is, the facade rule is a maximum, not a minimum. So as buildings get smaller, the facade rule will become less relevant as a controlling factor.
Well, I know, but we're just, I mean, if I understand, you're saying we should make the building small. A small lot, that's what I thought you were talking about.
Yeah, proportionately smaller.
Right. So the facade size rule isn't a rule to get at that because.
I mean, is that, is that really necessary? I mean, is make the building small?
Well, I think the.
It's contextual again.
I know, I'm like, now I'm one of the aerial photos. I'm like, well, what are the side yards in this town? And it's like, you know, I mean.
But the reasons for talking about this, two reasons. Let's go back to our first goal. Our first goal is to, uh, remove barriers that might be arbitrary and prevent for a wider variety of housing types and housing sizes, which we, we think would bring in housing at different price points. That would potentially make them more affordable. That's an exercise that many planning commissions are going through in, in many ways. Do we have barriers to, you know, more affordable housing types? So that's number one. And then the second is, and remember, we're just talking about houses in the historic district at the moment. The second is to say, well, you know, now that we have historic district and people can't tear down their houses, if they have a large lot, very easily, if they have a large lot, are there other ways we can make it possible for them to make productive use of their property? Because, you know, we're removing the ability to tear down a house or subdivide in, in, in certain ways. So is there something we could do to provide more flexibility for them to make use of their property? Which would, which would mean, again, looking at, um, a wider variety of infill options for people to consider. So this is the goals that we have.
I've been reluctant to count floor space, to cap floor space, livable, you know, floor area. But if we're not going to do that, then how is a height limit going to work administratively? Are we going to say that existing two-story twins can't add a floor? Are we saying that these new smaller twins can never, in the future, add a floor?
Well, see, the thing is, if, if, if the rules are about, if these infill rules only apply, remember the practice, they only apply in historic district to properties where there's a house that is going to be preserved through this subdivision. Then we can, we can have rules that apply in that situation, right? As opposed to a ordinary development outside historic district where someone is, you know, building houses on some other ground. So it's almost like a specially tailored set of rules. And then when these conditions apply.
So we can tell that an area like that, their houses can never be altered or expanded or added.
What's that?
We can tell these houses on that lot that they can never add to their house? Like they can never put an addition or add a floor? Is that something?
Tell who?
Well, we're allowing these small twins on the lot you're describing. Who's to say that the future owner doesn't build up or buy them?
Well, no, I wouldn't put it that way. I would say if we're going to allow for special kind of infill housing, like a cottage, like we've talked about already, we can have rules that apply just to that, right?
Yeah, but I'm asking, can the rule legally tell someone they can't add to their house?
Yes.
Sure.
Well. Yes and no. You, you can tell people your house must fit within this envelope.
Yeah.
And if that, as a practical matter says you can't add to it, then you can't add to it.
If there's a height limit.
We do that now.
On the floor.
Right. We do that now.
Right. The height limit is 35. So this new type of house, we limit it at something like 25.
We could do that. Yeah, we could say you can have a small infill twin. It could be narrower than twins in ordinary areas. Now, what that would mean is if your lot was big enough to build a twin under the regular part of the code, you could do it. But if you wanted to build one of the smaller ones, you could.
So that's like a new category of housing, infill twin, perhaps?
It's just, we have different metrics that apply to the same housing type in districts, different zoning districts. Already. So this would just sort of be a same housing type, but different metrics that apply to infill in historic district. Yeah. It's a little, I mean, it's almost like having a parallel, it's like an overlay district, right? You can use the overlay district, you can use the basic district. It's like an overlay, is what it's like.
That's, maybe it should be an overlay.
Yeah. It would be the infill overlay, which is co-terminus with the historic district. Yeah.
Right. And that only applies to properties, lots that have a contributing resource.
Right. So you don't have a contributing resource and you can demolish your house, then you have to use the regular cover. Now, we can, you might say, well, we'll apply these new ideas to that situation. Well, maybe, but let's just bite off one thing at a time. Let's see if we end up working as an overlay district.
Yeah.
And then, and really I think the reason for doing this is, is, this is, one, to prove that we can encourage smaller housing types. And two, I mean, your zoning in historic district should be consistent with the regulations of historic district, right? And you have a disconnect between if your zoning says and where your historic district says, that's when you run into problems. So this is part of a way of making the zoning more consistent with the historic district. Recognizing that we have a historic district where people are almost all but forbidden to tear down their homes. Or they aren't.
Well, they just have to get a certificate. Or they're to get, they have to go to council if they want to.
And the, yeah, but the way to do that requires a lot of, it's.
There is a process.
There's a process.
But you don't, don't guarantee to get them.
Right. And it requires a high burden of. So Jim, in this overlay district, you can have more finely set tailored rules that apply only when that overlay is big. So yeah, that makes sense. If, if we're going to allow for narrower twins, then we might limit the height as we do with cottages. 25.
And would you also consider like a proportionate ratio for impervious or restricting parking? Or, I mean, how do you handle like occupancy against, um, the size of a lot and the building itself?
Well, if they, yeah, parking would be something we'd have to think a little more deeply about. But, you know, you'd still get a on-street parking credit if you had a curveline a certain distance. If you, if you didn't have enough distance to build two twins, then maybe you just have to build a cottage. But that's still one that you can do now. Yeah, you'd still have to provide a parking spot. So we're giving not just the option of twins, but we also have the option of cottage as well that we've discussed. And since the cottage, I think, what is it, 40 feet, something? I mean, you know, what a lot of people do who are developing now is they calibrate their lot widths to what that block requires for an on-street parking space.
So these would actually be subdivisions?
This would be a subdivision.
This is not infill condominium.
Right, this would be a subdivision. Yeah.
If you have a 50-foot lot, split it.
Right. Or you could build a cottage, I think. Or you could build a single-family house.
I don't understand too, like, this has to be, yeah, if this, if we're not tearing anything down on the lot, it's got to be like a gigantic lot. And the town.
A lot of lots, a lot of lots.
They have side yards, yeah.
I know, but it has to be essentially three house lots of size with only one structure to leave you 40 to 50 feet to split off into two separate lots.
Well, that's in this situation. I mean, what is, what did we say about cottages? Could be any width, but a maximum of 40 or 50 or something.
Yeah, for cottages, but twin, a twin would require two 20-foot lots.
Maximum building width of 28 feet.
But if you don't have that space, then you can't build twins.
Right.
You have, you basically have to have 50 feet of ground almost.
Well, or 44.
Yeah, whatever the minimum would be.
Yeah. But if you don't, then you can't build twins, but you could still build a cottage. The cottage, uh, has a maximum building width of 28 feet. You can build as narrow as you'd like, your cottage.
Yeah, I mean, one of the examples I have here is a 40-foot lot with, with a cottage. It's seven, seven-foot side yard on either side.
Yeah.
Should we look, be looking at that?
We'll look at it in a second.
In a second.
It is. So a cottage could be in a lot anywhere up to 42 feet, but as small as you want to make it. Yeah, and there's certain points, this is a practical, essentially what we're trying to say, any, these infill rules, any lot size you can practically build a house on, you could do. Currently you need, what, 50 feet and 6,000 square feet?
Yeah, that's too, it's too large. It doesn't match any of the existing lots.
Right. So what we're saying now is we're going to offer a couple of options. You can build a twin if you have a certain amount of space. You can build a cottage if it's practical. And you can build a muse. And so you have different ways of approaching your site, none of which you have now. And you can't take advantage of all of them necessarily, but there's, there's certainly one you can take advantage of, which is more than you've got now.
So are the most important dimensions here to minimum lot width and the minimum lot size?
Yes, and so what they're suggesting is a minimum lot width of 22 feet for twins, as opposed to 25. And somewhere around 1,800 feet for a minimum lot size for a twin. So you go 1,800 by 22, what do you get? A 22 by 80? Something like that.
Maybe, yeah, always 80. 22 by 80 is 17, 16.
Yeah, so, see, it didn't matter. So yeah, that's what they're proposing. And a, and a maximum height of 25 feet.
Why, I don't see why we have a maximum height.
Okay.
Can't have a three-story house then?
Because it would look weird if it.
Is it, I mean, three-story twins are?
No, no, I'm not, I mean, not, I'm not saying in and itself is weird, but if it's, I think, in context?
I mean, to, to break it down, like, so a twin is going to be probably symmetrical on the axis.
So it's going to look bigger because it's wider.
Yeah, it's, it's going to look fine. It, it doesn't, I wouldn't over-regulate it personally, but I, I don't know, maybe, maybe it needs to be.
Maybe, but maybe it should be dependent on the block. Again, the facade build out.
Right, well, you already have that, right? If you, unless you're waiving the facade calculation. We're not waving that, right? So that controls the contextualism. You don't need a height.
At least in the first, second lot layer.
You have a 35-foot borough cap and it's a twin house. That's what I'm just getting at, like, what, you're basically, we'd be squeezing the twin house into two floors? And, you know, what, three floors is probably fine.
But, but again, we're still trying to make these more affordable. I mean, I think we're trying to avoid like the pushing, you know, everything out into, I mean, it's going to, even if you have a control in the front, in the second lot layer, I'm just imagining these houses sort of becoming bulbous in the back and like, you know, and, and pricing ourselves out of it again. I mean, I think.
I was thinking more like, what about two and a half and a share of half the second lot with like two stairways? I haven't worked it out on paper, but.
That would be a way a lot of twins are developed in the South Side, like Emerald Ridge, where that peaks and the minimum.
And I know, I know we want to have affordable, but it's also like affordable for whom, right? So if you have a family, you need enough rooms for your family. And so I just, uh, again, I mean, you know, I personally think lightly regulate and because just let, let people do what they need to do. So that, you have all these rules, right? Because you have the maximum facade size, the minimum lot size, the minimum lot width. I mean, there's a lot of controls that are in there, uh, already, so.
So I think, I think maybe what we could say is we are, we, we think there needs to be specially tailored rules that allow for smaller twins in infill development, particularly smaller lot sizes and smaller building widths. That the building width is somewhere around 22 feet, the lot size might be somewhere around 1,800 square feet. That we still need to consider, maybe look a little more closely at how building heights work and whether there needs to be a lower building height. It sounds like that's something we can work out a little more when we actually work out the metrics.
Yeah, we should talk about it more.
Yeah. At the moment, I'd just like to be able to tell council that, you know, we're adding in provisions for smaller kind of twin. Be a smaller lot, smaller building width. We're still looking at height questions, we don't know. But are they on board with that? that so we can actually know that's metrics down?
Yeah, I mean, of course, and then, I just, you know, again, like, the smaller lot, right, if we assume a seven-foot side yard, which is what you guys were suggesting earlier, and that's only fifteen feet, including the width of the walls themselves, so it's pretty small, right, and then it's probably, it's not a very deep lot necessarily, if it's, if we're saying that the reduced size could be shallower, so the house itself might only be about forty-five feet in depth, that's six hundred and seventy-five feet per floor, including the wall width, so a two-floor house is, is really functionally twelve hundred square feet, it's not, you know, so that's, I mean, I wouldn't over-regulate the form in terms of, you already have a lot of controls, so I think you've got, you've accomplished your goal with what you've done, probably, maybe, with the, with the lot size and the lot width and the housing types.
Well, like I always say, as you're going around the borough, look around and, and see.
Yeah, I think that's the plan. I mean, we'd be, we'd be creating a new housing type, I think, if we allowed small twins to go up three, thirty-five feet, I mean, it's just.
I, I don't think we're in our office tonight.
Would you go to a store where you can tell council?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't even tell council, but I really, I mean, this is a fundamentally important conversation, I don't want to dismiss it.
Right.
But, you know, I think.
It's subjective in a sense.
Yeah, but I always urge you, when you go around town, look around town with this question in mind, look at twins.
Like, directly by this town, as you could find almost anything.
Yeah, but that's okay, because you can go look at them and see what they're like.
Yeah.
You're not going to, like, say, like, like, find, like, oh, one thing, that is the answer, what you're going to do is you can go to the neighborhood where you have small twins, take a look at them. How do roofs work? How tall are they? How many square foot is it?
Well, and that's another issue, actually, is the pitch roof thing, too, for these, you know.
Well, we'll have, we'll have to tackle that when we tackle.
But it's another, another thing to throw.
But go, I just urge you to take a look, and, um, I think you'll come back with a better, or a good sense of, of how these work. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I think the next thing we could do is spend a little time looking at Dave's drawings, for accessory drawings. What Dave has done is I gave him five addresses to look at, to see how hard rules we propose for accessory dwelling units would work. If we, if the person who owned that lot tried to put accessory dwelling units, they're not sure, Samantha, oh, yes, Dave, thank you, Dave, thank you for printing these out. I would never have been able to do that, my printer would have, my printer would have busted, came in jammed, and ran out of ink, and.
Thanks for helping, architects.
Don't remember, thank you.
As always, yeah.
So Dave, well, obviously, what we're looking at, the idea here was to test fit, right, the rules we have proposed for ADUs.
So I, I took this email that Todd had written about three weeks ago, that highlighted four properties, Twenty-Six Norbert Park as a new construction ADU, Three Seventeen Grove Street as, as a conversion of an existing accessory building as an ADU, and Two Ten Wayne and One Oh Four Maple as subdivisions of either adding a cottage or a new on those properties, and the five sheets in front of you are the result of that initial exercise. A couple of caveats to begin with. I was not able to get a really accurate site plan of these properties, so this is a little bit of a generalized effort, I think it was done more to illustrate the issues at hand than to say this is absolutely positively what happens on these sites. I, I was not able to get site dimensions, the Montgomery County property records used to give them, but doesn't seem to give them anymore, which is kind of strange, so these were scaled off of the near map program with Chloe kindly provided to me. And I think these are pretty self-explanatory, the red is the proposed changes to the existing lots on each of these examples, and the calculation, the, basically, the, the coverage of, of the building footprints and the impervious coverage, and the totals along with the percentages of what that, that building and impervious represents on each of these lots. And it was, it was an interesting exercise, I, you know, I, I don't know, Todd, if you want to go through these one by one, or it'll take a little while, I think, to digest them as you go through them, but it, it, I think, starts to illustrate some of the issues that we've talked about tonight. Some of these properties obviously led themselves to this kind of development more than others, but it was, as I say, kind of an interesting and illustrative way to spend a little time.
So, I'll just tell you what you're saying here, Maple Avenue is an interesting lot because it's extremely wide and the house is smack in the middle.
It's also a very unusual lot, it's a flat lot with the access to the garage off of Elmwood.
Right.
That doesn't happen very often, but it, it provided the opportunities, you can see here, for having a garage for the proposed cottage, which is the only example of these that, that gave that kind of an opportunity.
Dave, my question about this one is, if you were to subdivide on the other side of the existing house, how wide would that lot be? Do you know?
Unfortunately, I didn't put my scale with me. I mean, oh, do you have an engineering, oh, my, somebody came prepared for class.
I'm a freshman.
Yeah, as opposed, as opposed to me, okay, so that other, that other is about, it's about thirty-seven feet from the face of the house to the property line?
Mm-hmm, so if you built a cottage there, it would be about twenty-three, twenty-four feet wide.
Right.
So you could have a small cottage there on the other side, too.
You could, you could conceivably do that, yeah.
So this shows how the cottage becomes an effective way of providing an option for infill, even on a, on a lot where you could never get a six thousand square foot lot, or the, or the lot width you need for a single family, for a detached house, cottage offers you the option of one or two, one or potentially two houses.
And you can see by the percentages of lot coverage, we're, we're well under the, they're maxing out the site.
So, so Wayne Avenue.
Okay, Wayne Avenue, there were two, two, two alternatives shown, the first is, is putting an ADU of eight hundred and square feet on, on the site, the thirty-three-foot setback that's shown is the, is the mandated setback in the code, the existing house is actually set further back than, I think, all the rest of the houses on the block, so that's what, that's what determined the, the location.
Would an accessory dwelling unit have to be, meet the frontage, but I don't think it would have to meet the frontage requirement, but.
No, I, I did it because I was trying to be contextual in where it's set, if you can sit further back, actually, the first time I drew it, I, I, I had it back at the front facade of the existing house, and then I moved it forward, so it wasn't intruding so much on the, on the rear portion of the house that gets wider.
So this is a twin house?
It's a twin house, and this drawing doesn't show the house that's adjacent, it would be to the right.
Right.
It's an interesting situation, where the house to the right has very little of the side yard, but the house to the left, shown here, has a big side yard.
Yeah.
We ran into this on Chestnut, where the fellow, who maybe had to, he maybe would have had to have taken the bay window off his house.
Right, right, yeah.
And then the second option shows putting a couple of mews in as a subdivided scenario. The issue I had with that, I drew the, the mews, was thinking about what that solid party wall looks like. Originally, I had it set off against the, the other property line, and decided that having, having that solid forty, almost forty-five-foot long party wall on, on that property line was really onerous to the neighbor, so that's when I, I flipped it over to the other side of the lot.
This brings up a good question. Does the muse allow to, a structure to be built?
On the line?
On the line, yeah.
I.
I don't think so.
That's a good question, I reread and reread the, the portion of the muse. I think, I, I think I assumed that, and I shouldn't have, because of its, you know, we talk about it as, as, you know, row of small houses, which to me meant in some way a row house?
Well, we don't want to use that term, in fact.
No, I know, I know that, but.
I don't think, as written, the muse was intended to not have a side or backyard setback. So that means.
Okay, well, then.
This points out the difficulty of the lot width to make this work. And then, if this were treated as a condominium lot, you could probably do it.
You just wouldn't have a subdivision line.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you wouldn't have a subdivision line, that's right. Which would be nicer all the way around.
Yeah.
It also means that you, that you could have windows on all, on all facades.
Yeah.
Which, which helps a lot.
So this sort of demonstrates, in this particular circumstance, the value of having a, something, a condominium option. Give you a little more flexibility.
Right. So both of these Wayne Avenue schemes, in both of these schemes, the accessory unit becomes dominant of the property.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of interesting, one of the things I take from this is, is eight hundred square feet may be okay for this, the occupiable space, but it may not be good for the floor plate.
Yeah, it may not be good for the lot.
Well, you could imagine that, that ADU scenario, of, of that unit kind of migrating back to the facade frontage of the existing house, and maybe moving closer to the property line, but that pretty much wipes out the usability of the existing garage.
Well, the, yeah, but one option would be to incorporate the garage into the ADU, that's why I'm also worried about, like, the height limits squashing it too much, because, you know, the typical granny flat, even though it's not very accessible, is a flat over the garage.
Yeah, I think this points out that an ADU should probably not be in front of the frontage of the building.
Although, keep in mind, in this, in this particular scenario, it, it is contextual with the rest of the block.
Yeah, and it's splitting the difference with the rest of the block, because the existing house is an odd duck for the setback.
Right.
It's a deep setback.
I think maybe it's kind of just an overwhelming width. If it wasn't as wide, if it was longer and narrower, it wouldn't feel like it's bigger than the house.
So just, before we couldn't think of any rules that could guide the kind of floor plate of an ADU, but this implies that we might need to have some sort of.
I'm not saying I love this plan, because I don't, but, but this is exactly why you need a context plan instead of a lot plan, because I think if you were to represent the figure ground of the block, this ADU is not going to dominate the street state, right? It's actually further back from the house next to it, and its facade width is, you know, a little big, at twenty-nine feet or whatever, but it, it's basically a, a row of big houses along the street, and a twin house, which is like an extra-large twin, because we're only seeing half of the twin here, so that's why, I mean, if you, if you saw the whole block, I don't think this ADU is going to look as much of a sore thumb as it does when it is smack in the middle of just this little, this like.
It also would probably get a lot better if it was more rectangular, less square, and also the floor plate would probably get a lot better.
And that patio between the house and it would grow, and it would just be a nicer space.
But it's good also to test, like, the worst-case scenario.
No, no, that's fine, it's a, it's a figure graph.
I wasn't trying, I wasn't trying to design the hell out of this.
You did great.
I think, I think if you consider the entire block, it looks better.
I was going to pay very low hourly rates to do this.
Grove Place.
Okay, Grove Place was, again, that's a, that's a new house that was built only within the last ten years or so, you know, and this was taking the existing garage, which was built out as having a, a, a space on the second floor and turning it into the ADU. Yeah, it's probably the most kind of straightforward implementation of this idea of any of these.
Since really not changed, I mean, except they have the stairs.
I mean, I threw, yeah, there might be an exterior stair, I don't know, presumably there's some access to the second floor, and what was built out in the interior, but I don't know what it is.
And then.
And then the Norbert Park.
Norbert Park. So you have a fifteen-foot setback, but I think an ADU can be a three-foot setback.
Well, that, well, I, I was really scratching my head about whether that was a rear yard setback or not.
Because it's Conway Avenue.
Yeah, I know, but the, but the lot, the front yard is on Norbert Park.
Right.
So, does that mean that the ADU is still, you know, constrained by the rear yard setback? I mean, it doesn't matter in this case, you know, obviously, in terms of talking about the idea, if it's a three-foot setback, it would certainly work with the existing garages that front up to Conway.
But I think an ADU can have a three-foot rear setback, it's just a primary building that has a fifteen-foot.
Okay, well.
Something that could work. I don't have a little mistake there, thanks. So, do any of these tests point out any flaws that we need to address, or does it show that the core ideas are pretty sound?
Well, I, I think for me, it says that there's, there's something to look at here, you know, there are things that seem to work, I mean, I'm not sure there are a tremendous number of properties, you know, where we're really talking about throughout the borough.
Yeah, well, it's always been the.
Yeah. I thought you would have, you'd guessed that they were forty?
Yeah, I mean, Sean, we talked, I talked with Sean Metrick about this once, and he, he thought to be very few, something of that nature.
Just, some of these also seem like they could just be lot splits or a single house, I mean.
Except you need six thousand square feet.
Well, that's, that's, it's not, I mean, that's just, that's a really big lot.
Well, that's, that's why we're testing out some of the cottage, I guess, right?
Yeah, I mean, the Maple Ave lot, there's twenty thousand square feet.
I think Wayne could be, Wayne is, could be split to have a cottage, it looks like, if you wanted to. Maple split to have a cottage, you couldn't split Norbert Park.
No.
You couldn't split Grove Place.
So you could easily.
You could split Wayne and Maple.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the cottage is going to be a really versatile tool.
Yeah. I mean, I do, I do think about what the form will look like, you know, you know, in the street facade of, of these, of these houses, and whether it will look contextual, but that's a whole other, you know, exercise.
I think a part of that, too, is, you know, how to bridge between this scale, the scale differences could be thought about in terms of trees and landscape and plantings and things of that nature.
Well, and actually.
It's an old scale.
Jim, you sure brought this up, too, is like, should there be some kind of concern about big trees that you'd be taking down to put these up?
Well. There will be.
Well, there are a lot, yeah, there are a lot of site, site development issues that is not addressed by this, that's, that's one of them.
Yeah.
And we're not requiring replacement?
We do require replacement.
Well, we would require...
In this context?
You don't want to lose a healthy specimen tree, though.
Well, we've seen a lot of that when that house was built on Norbert Avenue, you know, across the Presbyterian Church.
Yeah.
Several nice trees came down for that house.
I think probably in the next iteration of this, we should think about, is there some way to manage that? I mean, I don't want to be the pro-development steamroller here, but if these things have value, if the open space, the trees have value, and we're asking owners also to preserve their houses, not, I mean, we have to at some point say like, if that's a value, why shouldn't we pay for it or something?
Well, that is part of the character of the community.
Right, but you're asking one property owner to bear the burden of that.
I mean, on the other hand, a lot of the trees in the borough are nearing the end of their lives and, you know, making, allowing a property owner to do this and replacing a tree that's in old age with a new tree may not be the worst thing in the world either.
As long as it really does.
A lot of bad site plants have resulted from efforts to save trees.
Yeah, that's true.
Also to have the tree die.
Well, that and crappy trees, either non-native species or...
Well, I think we could do better than that.
Send these things to tree commission and...
Right.
I think what we're, unfortunately, and this is a key issue where various public goods collide. Open space is something that's good for the town.
But if we were going to...
Right, trees are good for the town, especially some old specimens, but preservation is good for the town. Infill is good for the town. So how do we, we're running up against, how do you balance all of that?
And I was thinking just objectively, you know, to investigate or, I mean, I have to look at the comprehensive plan myself as a new member here and familiarize myself with their objectives. But more than that, I think that if you look at impervious coverage and you compare it against tree planting in terms of stormwater runoff, you're going to see the benefits of plant life over impervious coverage. So if there is some way to think about how to sort of find that balance in terms of what the regulations are, it might be worth exploring. I have to do my homework.
I was waiting for someone to mention green roofs, but wow.
What's the minimum width for a cottage?
None.
None?
No, it's a maximum width of...
The width of the door.
However you functionally want to make a lot. Okay. Let's, I want to put one right on the table, maybe if we can give ourselves ten minutes and then leave earlier than we usually do. So one of the main, the last big topic, Dave, thank you for all that.
It was my pleasure.
I mean, these studies kind of help us.
Made me feel like an architect if you were to...
The last question to talk about today...
Rare opportunity.
When you draw it in red lines, I think I have to get my highlighter and start working on it.
You know, one of the infill suggestions we're making is that we allow more than one building on a lot. Our whole code is calibrated to the idea that you have one primary building on a lot, so building coverage, all of that. And the reason for that is, as we saw in Dave's drawing for Wayne Avenue and as we've been exploring elsewhere, sometimes we might get better site planning solutions if we didn't actually have to formally subdivide things and we could have a little more flexibility. And when we talked about this before though and wrote up this report to council, the principle we came up with is that we felt it was important to maintain the frontage setbacks, the side setbacks and the rear setbacks, but within that kind of perimeter, if you had more than one primary building, to provide flexibility about where they could go as long as, you know, as always, proper fire safety and health safety, you know, place, building separation was maintained, but that the setbacks that we require inside yards, internal to the lot, wouldn't need to be fun. So that's what's proposed in that report to council. But the elusive thing we didn't get to was, should we stick with the current building coverage ratio we have or should we modify? And the reason that comes up is, while our impervious coverage ratio is a fixed percentage of any lot, it's always the same. The building coverage ratio is on a sliding scale. The bigger your lot gets, the less additional building coverage you get. So if a owner were to self-divide their lot, they would automatically get a bonus of being able to get more building coverage.
Per square foot, yeah.
Just gross. If they went through the process of not self-dividing but building a condo, unless we change the rules, they would lose that advantage they get by doing the subdivision. And so the question is, since the whole purpose of this whole exercise is to provide more flexible approaches for property owners to do infill development, should we look at a way of sort of equalizing these situations somehow where if you subdivide, you kind of get a natural increase in the amount of square footage you can build or building coverage you can build? And if you create more than one building or a lot through a condominium, you can achieve something similar. So first of all, is that a principle that we should look at? And then secondly, if we did look at it, what would the ratio make? Where would we set that? So setting aside the question of, so let's just agree we should talk about it for the next ten minutes at least. So I've talked with some of you about this and I came up with some metrics to kind of help us. So like, what's the evaluative framework? So I put together some metrics. A very interesting metric is the old zoning code, the old, before Form B's code, had a maximum building coverage of thirty-five percent, just flat in the R2 and R3 zones.
Regardless of lot size.
Regardless of lot size, thirty-five percent. So it wasn't a sliding scale like we have now, it's a flat thirty-five percent. So like in the R, in the 3B zone, we start at fifty-five percent, but after a certain threshold, you only get a very small increment. So in practice, it goes between fifty-five percent, you know, for the largest lots, it might go down to twenty percent for our lots. So that was sort of an interesting metric. The second is I looked at a couple, so some people urged me, go look at Price Crossing up on near Norbert Park and look at the Methodist Church on Price and Essex. So I went and I pulled those plans and as far as I can tell, the building coverage for Price Crossing was twenty-one point six percent. Interesting, the floor plates for each of those rowed them to thousand feet. Small floor plates compared to what we're seeing. But anyway, it's thirty-eight point six percent and that's a kind of inefficient lot because the way it's sloped and shaped, so. And then Price Crossing was twenty-one point six percent, which is kind of low. Maybe you check, maybe I made a mistake, but it became...
I thought you said Price was the first one.
I'm sorry.
Presbyterian?
Rewind. The Presbyterian was thirty point six and Price Crossing was twenty-one point six.
Not Presbyterian.
Methodist.
Methodist, yeah.
Rewind.
I was on that one, yes.
So we really need to wrap this up. Price in Essex, the church conversion was thirty point six and Price Crossing at the end of Norbert Park in Price was twenty-one point six. So that was lower than I think any of us would have guessed, but I think the second one in particular is to do with the lot.
We're confident that these figures are correct.
Well, you know, I could be wrong. I pulled the plans out and read them, things were measured differently back then, so...
And that's just building coverage, that's not impervious.
That's building, impervious.
And that's just building coverage.
It's impossible to calculate, they had a really interesting way of calculating impervious back then, which I don't want to get into right now, so I didn't calculate impervious. Impervious is not a question for us because it's always sixty percent. So that's a entirely different question. The developer, it doesn't matter whether they do a condominium or whether they subdivide, they're still going against sixty percent, so it's not a separate question. So then I looked at 146 Marion. The existing property is fourteen point two percent building coverage and the tentative sketch plan that was submitted was forty-one point one percent building coverage. So forty-one point one is bigger than those other developments we saw on Price, but actually it's not much more than the old code would allow, thirty-five percent. So I guess what I'm thinking is, it may be interesting to think about a number, and then I actually, I sent this audio, we did a, I did a kind of analysis of how much building coverage every lot size in increments of five hundred feet would allow. So like a two thousand square foot lot, three thousand per zoning district. And so I came up with a couple of suggestions that we might consider. One is, since the old code allowed thirty-five percent, and if it did nothing else, at least that part of the code produced something, like we could say, well, for infill development, we'll just say it's either the format we have, but always a minimum of thirty-five The second option would be, in Form B's code, 3C zone allows a forty percent building coverage at its base. So we'd say maybe forty percent is the minimum for A and 3B. So thirty-five, forty percent. The third option would be, allow for a sort of flexible amount, which is some proportion of the difference between what you would get if you built it out entirely at like forty percent and what the code allows now. So it'd be like a sliding scale, you might get, and I kind of calculated it out on this chart that resulted in, I think what I did is like, if you, in the 3B zone where you get fifty-five percent of the first, what, four thousand square feet and five percent in the additional four thousand square feet, if you calculated the difference between what you can get now versus fifty-five percent on everything, kind of took half that difference what would you get? And it wound up being between sixty-two percent and again thirty-five percent for the largest lots. So there's a couple of different options. There's a flat amount, so first of all, keep it the same, which means you have an advantage to subdivide, or modify it to somewhere between thirty-five, forty percent or come up with a sliding scale of some sort. And that's about, I think, as far as our metrics will take us. And I guess what I'm wondering is, it's a lot of information, but what seems right to you? Does having a different allowance seem right? If so, do any of these ideas about how to calculate it sound right?
I think they all sound reasonable.
Reasonable.
You would get that kind of coverage in a subdivision scenario pretty easily.
Right. And that's why people are trying to do subdivisions.
Yeah.
And right now, they can subdivide and get, as they did 146 Marion, they were able to get forty-one percent. That's what the tentative sketch plan, forty-one percent going down. And it's probably about as efficient as you can get. Because they got boxy lots.
The box.
Yeah, even those lots that technically allow fifty-five percent can't really reach fifty-five percent due to the setback constraints and they often end up in the low forties. So it seems about right.
I don't look at you, but just don't...
I'm looking at you. I'm a digital person. I need to see this, like, Dave needs to draw it.
Oh, good. I was hoping you'd say that.
Let me ask you a question, Heidi. It's the first proposition that if we allow for multiple buildings in a lot...
Right.
That we somehow need to bring the building coverage closer to what someone can get for subdivision.
Right.
Does that make sense as a problem?
Well, so with the, the reason to allow them to do that is why? Condo versus subdivision, because subdivisions are just impossible in certain cases?
The reason to allow them to do condos is you have more site planning flexibility. You can have more ability to arrange buildings in a lot in an advantageous way, like for example, a void tree or a subdivision might...
Because you don't have the side yard setbacks.
Yeah, once you start factoring in the side yards, you might end up having an inefficient way of subdividing it.
Yeah.
And I think even with the historic district ordinance in place, anything that we have that gives more flexibility on how a property can be developed is probably a good thing.
Right, that's one of our big goals. Because we're stringing people's rights, so this is a way of expanding that. And the question is, so if we were to agree that it makes sense to try and figure out a building coverage ratio that is, recognizes that if you subdivide and you get a lot of building coverage, then the question would be which, what approach or what amount seems not fair at least.
Yeah, the other aspect of this is, you know, I don't know where we are in the process of talking about any new construction we require onsite stormwater management, but you know, if that's the case, having a little more building on the site really doesn't impact the water water off issue as much.
Apparently, I think if you disturb more than twenty-five hundred square feet, you have to have stormwater management. I think that's, if they're, it's still on the phone, you can answer that, but I also know that they're looking at new standards in revision to the stormwater code that would make those requirements stricter. I'm not sure what they're looking at exactly, but yes. And I also think there's probably improvements in our landscape.
Thank you.
So, well, are there any other thoughts of that, that this idea is elicited at this Would it be fair to me to say, if someone asked the council that we're looking at how to adjust building coverage in a situation where there's a condo, but we haven't come up with the right way to do that yet?
Well, I think it would be good, I mean, I'm kind of was only half joking about the visual.
Oh, yeah.
Because, I mean, if you took 146 Marion, for example, and you showed a condo layout on the property, which I don't think they had done, have they done condos? They did a, oh, I guess this one is kind of, but this one is also could be a subdivision.
Yeah.
And just put the numbers there to see what the difference is in coverage.
We can, we can do things like that, yeah.
Pick a couple of properties, maybe even use these same, I mean, I don't know if it makes sense to use these same ones. Just imagine a condo development on that.
Well...
Well, there were other properties that was in that email that you had sent.
Right.
Yeah, but could also be looked up.
So it's fair to say that it's a question we're looking at. We haven't found the right metrics yet.
But this is the issue. I think you can certainly define the issue.
And we found, we have found precedence for thirty, thirty to forty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's good enough. Okay. Any other questions before we? Okay. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Nine thirty-five, on favor?
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.